Can I have enough of that?
Yeah.
Stacy's head, ready, he's coming. Right, he's walking up.
We've ordered a wireless system, they were hopeful it would be here today.
But it wasn't.
He's walking up.
Make sure the mics are off.
It's a good place for this morning.
Yeah.
Yesterday at the time, I was with my wife's car and we got the phone plugged in so Waze's was just spooked. When the phone rings, it blanks out the Waze screen and I couldn't see where the turn was. I said, I gotta hang up, I gotta turn.
The wrong, yeah, the wrong time, it's not helpful, is it?
Yeah. Cause we were wandering some back roads.
That's the way. Anything we can get done?
That's just a British presentation we intended to do.
And I like what you said about in honor of the family. For those who didn't know, Mrs. Hunley's mom was the first African American on the woman on the road supervisors for her to put around.
You ready?
Yep.
All right, good morning. I hereby call this meeting of the Williamsburg James City County School Board to order. Ms. Oller, will you take the role?
Dr. Cavassos.
President.
Ms. Chen.
Here.
Mrs. Donner.
Here.
Mr. Hosang.
Here.
Mrs. Hunley.
Here.
Mr. Riffle.
Here.
Mrs. Ordigo.
Here.
Okay. I'll call to order this meeting to the James City County Board of Supervisors. Mr. Stevens, please call the role.
Mr. Hippel.
Here.
Ms. Knoll.
Here.
Ms. Larson.
Here.
Mr. McGlynn.
Here.
Ms. Eisenhower.
Here.
Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call the Williamsburg City Council meeting to order. Ms. McKay, would you call the role, please?
Here.
Ms. Chen.
Here.
Mrs. Donner.
Here.
Mr. Hosang.
Here.
Mrs. Hunley.
Here.
Mr. Riffle.
Here. Sounds like we have a delay in the speaker system.
Set a second delay.
That's gonna make the next part of this really entertaining.
Yeah.
Let's, let's see if we can, can we turn the speaker to my right down or all?
There's a delay in it.
Check, test.
Here?
Okay.
Yeah, moving on to action items. Is it over to you, Mr. Eisenhower?
Actually, Madam Chair, excuse me, we would like to, and when I say we, it would be Mr. Trivet, City Manager, County Administrator Stevens, and I would like to give a brief presentation on the proposed joint school operations contract if you'd be so inclined. Is that okay?
Of course, yes.
First of all, thank you, everyone, for being here. It is an exciting day, ten-ten, it's probably a ten out of a ten, so it's great that we scheduled this on October the tenth. We have been working diligently to put together what we think is a strong operations agreement and contract for the school division, for the county, and for the city, and we would like to share with you some of those key aspects. Mr. Trivet?
Yeah, so a key component of this modernized contract is that it invests in the system. It provides a pathway for increased funding year over year to the school system, and that begins in 2027 with both localities agreeing to additional funding. James City County will agree to one hundred and four point five million, and the City of Williamsburg, fourteen point four five million for 2027 funding year. And I think it's a, it's a good thing to start the year knowing what the investment will be. And then a second component, just as critical, is that annually it adjusts for enrollment in a way that we've not done before. It more accurately captures enrollment by locality, assigns those enrolled students to specialized programming, and then attributes the cost for that specialized programming to the locality to pay it correctly.
Another feature of the agreement is that we believe it will simplify our capital funding mechanism. The different localities will be responsible for funding capital projects within their respective locality, and in those cases where there are shared use facilities, those costs would be split across the two localities. One of the items that I think all of us would agree on is that it's important to know in a predictable fashion what your annual funding amount would be. In this particular contract that we're excited about, the localities provide the school division with an estimated revenue option, or revenue opportunity in October to begin planning for the fiscal year. With that data, the school division would begin to put their budget together using the parameters as established, and if there were a need to request for additional funding related to certain student performance enhancements, we would present that to both bodies during the budgeting process. And then finally, from, from my perspective, from our perspective, we believe that this new contract, revised contract, restructures the schedule of joint meetings so that division-wide and community-specific performance data can be a driver for budget requests. We're meeting today to share student performance from the twenty-four, twenty-five school year with both bodies and to then level set the budgeting process. In December, the school division would convene a joint meeting to go over the capital projects that we are proposing, and then in February, in the first week or so, I would release the superintendent's estimate of needs for all bodies to have and go through the budgeting process.
And then the final item, it really restructures the school board governance. It brings the WJCC school board back as in a party to the contract. It strengthens our ability of where the funds are going in terms of addressing some of the strategies and enhanced student performance. And again, you'll hear more of that in our meeting later today, at least to start of that kind of conversation of student performance. It also allows the JCC Board of Supervisors to have the option to vote to add two new school board members to address population growth in the county and student enrollment growth in the county and funding options. So for us, I think it ties in a lot of the big points that we have talked about, issues that we had heard, and really excited to be to the summary of the contract. I'll turn it back over to Dr. Kiefer for some closing comments and see if you have any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens. I, I wanted to personally thank everybody that's been involved in this process in terms of the work group that's been hammering through the language and talking about the, the different pieces of the puzzle. Ms. Ordigo and Ms. Donner for the school division, Ms. Kernsheer and Mayor Pons for the city council, Mr. Eisenhower and Ms. Larson for the board of supervisors. Also feel like we should pay tribute to our CFOs who have worked collectively to help generate some of those numbers that are so important, and then also want to thank you, Mr. Stevens and Mr. Trivet, for your leadership. At this time, would you mind reading the resolution so that everybody can understand where we're headed?
Sure, we're happy to do that. We do have a joint resolution for each body to consider in a few moments, and I will read it, or at least attempt to, correct me if I miss a word or two out of there. It's a joint resolution to enter into a contract for the joint operation of the Williamsburg James City County Public School System. Whereas the County of James City, the City of Williamsburg, and the James City County School Board, and the Williamsburg City School Board, operating as a joint Williamsburg James City County School Board, have operated a school system together since July first, nineteen fifty-five. And whereas the county and the city entered into updated amended contracts for the joint operation of the school system in years sixty-three, nineteen sixty-five, nineteen sixty-nine, nineteen seventy-one, nineteen eighty, nineteen ninety-one, nineteen ninety-six, two thousand and one, two thousand and six, two thousand and seven, two thousand and twelve, two thousand and seventeen, and two thousand and twenty-two, and whereas the restated contract for the joint operation of the schools dated May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two, was approved by the city on May twelfth, twenty twenty-two, and the county on May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two, and whereas the school administration building and the three school buildings are located in the city with the operations center, bus garage, and the remaining thirteen school buildings located in the county, and whereas the county has approximately ten thousand two hundred students in the school system, and the city has approximately one thousand one hundred and fifty students in the school system, and whereas the parties desire to settle all disputes under the prior contract and continue the joint school division with a modernized approach for operating and capital costs with the improved, with improved student outcomes through a new contract for the joint operation of the Williamsburg James City County Public Schools. Now therefore be it resolved that the James City County Board of Supervisors, Williamsburg City Council, and the Williamsburg James City School Board do hereby authorize and direct the county administrator, city manager, and superintendent to execute those documents necessary to enter into the contract. And this is the same resolution each body would be asked to consider.
With that, are there any questions?
Okay. I will, I will look for, may I have a motion that the board of supervisors adopt the joint resolution to enter into a contract for the joint operation of the Williamsburg James City County Public School System, and to authorize and direct the county administrator to execute the necessary documents to enter into the contract for the joint operation of the Williamsburg James City County Public School System.
Thank you.
I will move the resolution for the joint contract.
Mr. Stevens, call the role, please.
Mr. Hippel.
Aye.
Ms. Knoll.
Aye.
Ms. Larson.
Aye.
Mr. McGlynn.
Aye.
Ms. Eisenhower.
Aye.
With that resolution being stated, may I have a motion from the city council to approve the resolution?
I move that the city council adopt the joint resolution to enter into a contract for the joint operation of the Williamsburg James City County Public School System to authorize and direct the city manager to execute the necessary documents to enter into the contract for the joint operation of the Williamsburg James City County Public School System.
Second.
Thank you. Ms. McKay, would you call the role, please?
Ms. Williams.
Aye.
Ms. Kernsheer.
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Dent.
Aye.
Mayor Pons.
Aye. Thank you. Motion's passed.
All right, item two point zero three, school board approval of the resolution for the joint contract. Can I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that the school board adopt the joint resolution to enter into a contract for the joint operation of the Williamsburg James City County Public School System, and to authorize and direct the superintendent to execute the necessary documents to enter into the contract for the joint operation of the Williamsburg James City County Public School System.
Thank you, Mrs. Donner. Is there a second?
And I second.
Thank you, Mrs. Hunley. Ms. Oller.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Mr. Hosang.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mr. Riffle.
Aye.
Dr. Cavassos.
Aye.
Ms. Chen.
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye.
All right. We are going to call a brief recess at this point, and just, yeah, we'll be back in about ten minutes.
Thank you.
Collaborative and strategic. I think it's important for me to note that this presentation is more than just numbers. It's about the students. It's about their progress. It's about the challenges that they're overcoming and the work that our staff is doing every day to ensure that every student has an opportunity to experience success. The presentation today will dive into some of our key performance indicators regarding Elevate to 28. We will then go through a high-level refresher on the differences between the school, excuse me, VDOE's accountability model and accreditation model. I think it's important that we remind you of that. And then we will look specifically at WJCC student performance across demographic groups as well as between city and county students.
And Dr. Keever, if I might, I just wanted, before he launches into the presentation, I would just like to set a backdrop, if you will, of what has transpired from a school board, from a school division perspective over the last two years, a lot of it within the last two years even. It has been a time of a lot of change and a lot of uncertainty. We've had almost complete turnover of the school board. Within the last four years, we have had a complete turnover of the school board. We had a longstanding superintendent announce retirement, and we had a phase with an interim. And then, of course, we conducted a superintendent search, which was a massive undertaking. And I think we ended up with a pretty good pick.
Thank you. I guess maybe "pretty good" is elevated after the presentation or not?
We'll see next year.
Okay, next year, okay.
Excellent pick. We've introduced a division-wide literacy curriculum, which we did not have before. We're just starting the second year of that. We are in the first year of introducing a new division-wide math curriculum. The testing changed. There was a testing model, it was called PALS, it has changed to VALS, and that is more than just swapping out a letter. That was a whole different way of assessing, and the numbers just looking different. And we are still in the middle of an ever-changing accountability and accreditation process. So it's a little bit of a moving target still. So if you put all that together. Now, of course, there was also the looming potential split, so there was a lot of uncertainty for the future and the direction of the school division. I think it's very poignant that we have today, we've just signed the contract, so that looming split is no longer a thing. So in a lot of ways, this is a new beginning. This is a new beginning for WJCC schools, and a stronger beginning. So I just wanted to set that as a backdrop before we launch into our presentation.
Thank Ms. Ortego. On the first slide, we want to share some data with this body that we shared with our school board back in June. Our key priority within Elevate to 28 is focused on academic achievement, college and career readiness, and educational equity. And our aim, I think it's important to reiterate, is to transform teaching and learning to prepare students for success in post-secondary education and their careers. This slide shows how the school division is performing related to our key performance indicators. So for instance, the percentage of students K2 meeting proficiency on the VALS assessment that Ms. Ortego just indicated was 79% in the 24-25 year. Our target related to the strategic plan is 85%. Our Bright Beginnings demonstrating literacy growth and kindergarten readiness on VALS is at 95%, which is above our target. 97% of our Bright Beginning students are meeting growth, or demonstrating growth in the Virginia Kindergarten Readiness, VKRP, 97%. And then also, the increase, the increasing identification of K-12 gifted students from underrepresented groups, we saw a slight increase as we work to continue to get towards our target rate. Sean?
Thank you, Dr. Keever. Throughout today's presentation, we will share greater detail on the six SOL-related KPIs shown here. However, here is a summative overview of the division's progress. 78% of students met proficiency on the grades three through eight and end-of-course English reading SOL test. And 88% of students in grades four through eight demonstrated growth in their reading achievement. 77% of students met proficiency in grades three through eight and the end-of-course math SOL test. And 83% of students in grades four through eight demonstrated growth in their math achievement. 77% of students met proficiency on the grades five, eight, and end-of-course science test. And 80% of students met proficiency on the grade-10 SOL writing test. Additionally, today's presentation will outline targeted strategies to accelerate student learning and close the gap between current performance and our key performance indicators. We'll focus on actionable steps, such as high-quality Tier One instruction, expanded support programs, and of course, professional development that will drive measurable gains in student achievement. Dr. Warley will share progress on our remaining four KPIs for the key priority during the annual portrait of a graduate presentation in early November. Although the state of Virginia has used the term accreditation related to student performance for many, many years, it's now going to recognize two distinct systems. Accountability relates to school and student performance. You'll notice the rectangle around the letter spelling count, meaning schools are accountable for every student's performance, counting towards each school's designation status. Schools will receive a school performance category rating based on mastery and growth achievement, readiness, and graduation. Whereas accreditation on the right now relates only to compliance with meeting the defined standards of accreditation. The Virginia Standards of Accreditation are designed to ensure that an effective educational program is established and maintained in all of Virginia's public schools regarding things such as programming, staffing, instructional requirements, graduation requirements, and several other areas. Essentially, each school gets credit on an extensive checklist for meeting all those expectations. So each school will receive a second designation for meeting all the standards of accreditation. And individual schools may receive a third designation if they're identified for not meeting federal expectations around various student groups' performance. So if a school is federally identified for not meeting expectations, the school's overall performance category designation will be reduced by one level.
Let's take a look at how schools are currently evaluated by the new accountability framework. Student academic achievement is now evaluated and reported in the new Performance and Support Framework, which is a model with weighted categories based on a 100-point scale, focuses on student proficiency in English reading, math, science, and is measured by the SOL test and English learner progress. It recognizes the importance of student growth, student attendance, graduation, and future-ready skills in high school. It includes student reporting groups' performance in the new model that are aligned to the federal accountability requirements. If a reporting group is considered too small, it is not included in the final calculation for the reporting group. It is important to note that in the past, groups with less than 30 were not included in the subgroup calculation. However, starting this year, the number has been reduced from 30 students to 15. And finally, the new accountability model has four final performance level descriptors labeling schools as distinguished, on track, off track, or needs intensive support. Each school will receive a performance category designation based on points obtained from the multiple indicators within each component for a specific level. The distinguished performance category means that a school earned 90 points or higher out of 100 and is exceeding the state's expectations. The on-track performance category means a school earned between 80 and 89 points and is meeting the state's expectations. The off-track performance category means a school earned between 65 and 79 points and is not meeting the state's expectation for mastery, growth, or readiness. While still unofficial, our internal projections show Williamsburg-Jame City County schools will most likely have one distinguished school, 14 on-track schools, and one off-track school. We would like to share specifics, but we feel it's too early to do so. We hope to have official information as early as next week. In addition to performance categories, schools will also receive an accreditation rating. The School Division Accreditation Report has nine overarching standards with 100-plus questions. This report is essentially a compliance checklist ensuring Virginia school divisions provide an effective, high-quality educational program for all students focused on student achievement and high school graduation, school safety, meeting, staffing, and infrastructure requirements, following local and state laws, and working collaboratively with stakeholders in the best interest of students. Each school will receive an accreditation designation based on meeting the criteria outlined in the Virginia Standards of Accreditation. For example, fully accredited means all evidence submitted is satisfactory and approved for compliance. Conditionally accredited means submitted evidence is unsatisfactory or noncompliant. By our internal data review, we believe that 100% of our schools will receive full accreditation for meeting all the criteria, but we have not received official designations from the state. Upon receipt from the state, we will update the boards.
As Kathy mentioned, we do anticipate that that information will be released as early as next week. We were hopeful to receive additional information this week to be able to include in the presentation, but as of yet have not received that. Before we move into looking at the academic data, we think it's important to understand the unique structure of our school division, Williamsburg-Jame City County, as one of the only jointly operated divisions in the Commonwealth. We serve two distinct localities, the city of Williamsburg and Jame City County, yet we operate as one unified division, sharing a common mission, budget, and vision for student success. The next several slides will show our student enrollment and demographic data from the 24-25 school year. This information will show WJCC as a combined school division, and it will be disaggregated as well by the two localities, city and county. This data provides important context of who we are as a division and also what we look like across the two different bodies. Our diversity, racially, culturally, economically, is one of the greatest strengths. It challenges us to design instruction that meets every learner's needs and to cultivate the culture of inclusion and belonging across all the schools. So for instance, our enrollment as a school division here is provided for you. As we look at the demographic makeup of our school body, the largest group of students identifies as white, representing 52% of our enrollment. The second-largest group is black, making up 19%, followed closely by Hispanic, and then two or more races. Asian students represent 2.7%, and American Indian students represent a small portion of less than a percentage point. When you look at our enrollment by locality, you'll see Williamsburg on the left and Jame City County on the right. Moving into enrollment by student groups, this data comes to you by way of the year-end reporting, and it represents our enrollment data for three key student groups: economically disadvantaged, English learners, and students with disabilities across Williamsburg, Jame City County, and then as a combined division. The total enrollment in this particular snapshot that was done at the state level was 11,233. On the left, economically disadvantaged students, Williamsburg has the highest proportion of economically disadvantaged students at 54.4%, totaling 589 students out of the 1,082. Jame City County at 35.8%, with 3,636 students. The combined WJCC rate is 37.6%, 4,225 students. There's a small orange line that is going to come up on the left-hand side of the screen momentarily. There it is. That small orange line represents students within Williamsburg experiencing housing instability, representing those students lacking fixed, regular, or adequate nighttime residence as defined by the McKinney-Vento Act. About 21% of the 54%, 124 students, are in that proportion. On the next slide, we'll look at James, nope, I'm sorry, go back, Sean. Oops. That's Daniel's fault. Can you go back one?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. The line that you see where it says 8% is the Jame City County percentage of students who are experiencing housing instability. If you look at the English language learners, Williamsburg shows the highest percentage with 22.2% of English language learners, Jame City County at 8%. Overall, WJCC is just under 10% in terms of English language learners. One-third of our English language learners are levels one or two, which requires the most direct instruction and academic support. I think it's important also to share the schools with the highest number of Level One and Level Two English language learners. James River Elementary had 63 students that fit that category, Matthew Whaley at 58, Berkeley Middle with 25, and Jamestown High School with 45. And then looking at students with disabilities, all three groups have a fairly similar proportion of students with disabilities, with the city containing a higher percentage at 17.7, Jame City County at 16.2, and overall, we were at 16.4%. As we look at our students and their backgrounds and what they bring to school every day, we reviewed some data from William Mary and Project Hope related to students experiencing homelessness and their all-assessment pass rates in the Commonwealth of Virginia. And what you'll see on this slide is that all students performed at 70.9% on the reading SOL in 23-24, whereas those that were designated as economically disadvantaged performed at 58%, and those experiencing homelessness were at 39.4%. You will see that homelessness has a tremendous impact on student performance. That same data presents itself in the graduation rate and has for the last 15 years. Another factor for us as we're considering our students and their performance is the transancy rate. This slide shows a rate calculation for each locality and a combined rate for WJCC. This rate takes into consideration students who entered school after the first week, and so in the 24-25 year, it would have been after September the 2nd, and then students who left prior to the last day of school, which in 2025 was June 13th. These students were considered mobile or transient. We believe that if you are with us every day, all year, we have a much stronger opportunity to put you in a position to be successful as a young person. So that percentage was 21.5%, or 233 students in the city, 11% in the county at 1,117 students, and then in total, our transient rate was about 12%. I think it's also important to know what the enrollment totals are by locality within each of our schools. Again, this is for last year's state reporting. Of particular note, the schools with the highest percentage of city students, Matthew Whaley at 71%, Berkeley Middle at 23%, Lafayette High School at 23%, Clarebird Baker at 19%, Laurel Lane at 10%, and then James Blair Middle at 14%. So those six schools contain the highest percentage of students that reside in the city.
The next several slides will show the achievement results for WJCC students and also by localities. This slide shows the 2025 SOL achievement with WJCC data in green and the state average in blue. You can see that WJCC's performance in green is above the state average in blue for all five SOL-tested subjects. So what do those numbers represent? The 78% for English reading displays the percentage of WJCC students passing the state SOL reading test demonstrating proficiency. Our students are assessed annually in reading in grades three through eight and once in high school with an end-of-course reading test. Another example, the 80% for English writing displays the percentage of grade 10 WJCC students passing the state writing test. We move on to 77% of the students passing for proficiency with both math and science, and 74% pass proficiency for history, social sciences. This slide shows the percentage of students pass proficiency rates by locality across the five subject areas for 2025. City of Williamsburg students' pass proficiency rates are in the light green. The middle blue bar represents the percentage of students' pass proficiency rates for Jame City County students, and the darker blue bar shows the state average pass proficiency rate. For example, looking on the left, you can see that 64% of Williamsburg students demonstrated pass proficiency on the English reading SOL test compared to 80% of Jame City County students earning proficiency. Jame City County in the light blue outperforms both Williamsburg and the state average, while Williamsburg students are below the state average in four of the five tested subject areas. This graph shows the school division's SOL assessment data for three years. Reading the graph from left to right, purple bar represents 22-23 data, the orange bar 23-24, and the dark blue bar represents the most recent data, 24-25 school year. The next several slides will report the data in this format. The 24-25 annual pass rate results are English reading 78%, English writing 80%, math and science 77%, and history, social sciences at 74%. As a reminder, history SOL scores were not included in the previous state accreditation model, and it continues to not be a component in the new state accountability system. As a school division, WJCC maintained reading and writing performance and showed slight improvements in math, science, and history. And our staff's committed to embracing continuous growth and seizing every opportunity to increase achievement for all of our students. This three-year graph shows the combined annual pass rate of our nine elementary schools across the four content areas for students in grades three through five. The dark blue bar is the 2025 data showing English reading at 73%, math 78%, science 75%, and history 72%. The thin red line represents the state average for all elementary schools across the state of Virginia. And as you can see, our combined nine elementary schools' average is above the state average in all four tested subjects. For the 24-25 school year, growth was determined by VIVAS, Virginia Visualization and Analytics Solution. This statistical model uses a student's SOL test history in all subjects, along with the test history of their peers across the whole state, to determine an expected and an actual SOL score for each student. The difference between these two scores identifies whether growth was met or not. These pie graphs display the percentages of grades four and five students from the nine elementary schools achieving various levels of growth: exceeded their expected growth, met expected growth, below expected growth, and did not meet growth. For example, the green sections, 16% and 16.3% of our fourth and fifth graders, represent students that exceeded more than a year's worth of growth on those SOL tests. The blue pieces that show roughly one-third of our students in fourth and fifth met the year's worth of growth. Although the students represented by the purple pie pieces did not meet their full year's worth of growth, they still did demonstrate some growth on their SOL test in reading and math. The 13% and 14.3% in that light peachish color of the pie graph indicate the number of students that did not show growth. Overall, though, 85% to 87% of all of our fourth and fifth grade students demonstrated various levels of growth and earned new points in the new accountability model. The earned points for growth are totaled and account for about 25% of the school's final designation category. These scores are not counted into the pass proficiency rates, which was the previous practice in the former state accreditation model.
The next several slides will follow the same format for middle and high school as you heard Mr. Walker present on elementary school. This graph shows the annual combined pass rate for our four middle schools across the four content areas for grades six through eight, which includes initial tests and retakes. English came in at 79%, math at 74%, science at 74%, and history at 79%. The thin red line represents the state average for all middle schools in Virginia, and you can see that our four, that our combined four middle schools' average is above the state averages in all four tested areas. Like the previous elementary slide, this slide illustrates the growth of middle school students, grades six through eight, in reading and math. Looking at the green sections, 18.4% and 13.1% of students exceeded a year's worth of growth in reading and math. The purple sections represent the students that did not fully meet the expected growth, but they did demonstrate some academic growth. Overall, over 80% of our middle school students demonstrated various levels of growth and earned points in the new accountability model. This graph shows the combined academic performance of our three high schools across the four content areas, which is initial tests and retakes. The English pass rate represents the combination of reading and writing. The 2025 overall pass rate for English is 84%, math 86%, science 81%, and history 56%. The thin red line represents the state average for all high schools in Virginia, and you can see that our combined three high schools' average is considerably above the state averages in math and science and 2% lower the high school state average in reading and history. You may be wondering about the history, social science graph and the lower performance. The state allows flexible options for students to demonstrate mastery in social studies. With these SOL tests, we now have an alternative pathway to verified credit in history, social science, for world geography, world history I and II, and it's known as the LAVC II. Over 1,200 students in our three high schools were awarded a verified credit via the LAVC II option last year in these history courses. Throughout the school year, students demonstrate mastery of content and skills through this process. Students taking the LAVC II did not sit for the SOL, and the pass rate was 91.2%. It is also an important factor to note that there's been a change in diploma requirements at the state level, and it now only requires students to earn one verified credit in social studies, one verified credit in science, and one verified credit in math. Therefore, we will see a significant drop in the total number of high school students taking SOL tests in these subject areas. The next few slides take a deeper look at how groups of students are performing on the state assessments within our division. This slide looks at the performance of reporting groups on the reading SOLs last year, along with the two previous school years. The purple bar represents 2023 results, the orange bar 2024 data, and the dark blue bar represents our performance for the 24-25 school year. For example, let's look at the performance of our students with disabilities. The dark blue bar shows a 46% pass rate compared to 43% the previous year. Overall, we maintained performance for three student groups and improved 1% to 3% in two of the five subgroups in reading. We are continuing our work to accelerate progress across all groups. This slide breaks down division reading scores by city, county, and the division as a whole. The light green bar shows Williamsburg City student performance compared against the county student performance in light blue. The dark green bar shows the combined performance for the city and county. The end number on each bar represents the total number of testers, not the total student enrollment. For example, 76 Black students out of the 158 testers in Williamsburg City, or 48% demonstrate pass proficiency on the English reading SOL test. In comparison to the 599 Black students out of the 951 testers, or 63% demonstrated pass proficiency on the English reading SOL test.
This slide shows the three years of math performance for those five student groups. If we look at the middle set of bars, denoting the mathematics performance of our economically disadvantaged students, the dark blue bar shows a 62% pass proficiency rate, up two percentage points from the previous year. Overall, when comparing the 2024 orange bar to the 2025 dark blue bar, you will see positive gains in mathematics for four of the five student groups, with the Black students remaining constant at 57%. The light green bars show Williamsburg City student performance compared against the county student performance in the blue bar in the middle, and the dark green bar on the right shows the combined performance of the city and county together. Again, the end number on each bar represents the total number of testers, not total student enrollment. For example, 317 economically disadvantaged students in the city took the math SOL test, and 56%, or 178 students of those 317, earned pass proficiency. Additionally, you will see a ten percent difference in math proficiency rates between the black students in the city versus the county. Here you see three years of science SOL performance for the five student groups. If we look at the second set of bars, our Hispanic students. The orange bar shows a fifty-five percent pass rate for Hispanic students in twenty-twenty-four, and the dark blue bar indicates a sixty-three percent pass rate for last year, twenty-twenty-five. That's an eight percent point improvement. Overall, when comparing the twenty-twenty-four orange bar to the twenty-twenty-five blue bar, you'll see positive gains in science for four out of the five student groups. Again, we see the light green bar on the left showing Williamsburg City student performance compared against the county student performance in blue in the middle. The dark green bar shows that combined performance of city and county together. You'll notice that the blue bar representing James City County students' pass proficiency rates in science are higher than Williamsburg students' science pass rates.
The data that we've just reviewed informs every instructional decision that we make as a school division. We're not guessing. We have specific focus areas that are built around what the data tells us. And frankly, we're not satisfied with the data that we've just shared. What we're going to summarize for you in the next few slides are specific actions that we'll be taking in literacy, mathematics, science, social studies, working with families, and then a plan to address the gap between City of Williamsburg students and James City County students. I want to also point out that our administrative teams and our school leaders are working each day to help lift this work and provide feedback to teachers on a timely basis.
The next few slides highlight the comprehensive efforts that we're taking to strengthen instruction for all students in literacy, math, science, and history. We have anchored our action steps across three key areas: high-quality, tier-one classroom instruction, progress monitoring with interventions, and professional learning for our staff. For example, our work in literacy is grounded in the science of reading, which emphasizes both word recognition and language comprehension as essential components of developing skilled readers, and this is paired with providing evidence-based literacy instruction coupled with high-quality instructional materials. Our elementary schools are continuing the use of Benchmark Advanced in its second year of implementation, and at the secondary level, we've adopted HMH into literature for grade six through twelve. We've have defined systems for progress monitoring and interventions. We have literacy intervention teachers, trained tutors, all working directly with students who are requiring additional targeted support. And to ensure consistency in monitoring student growth, we're also using a couple computer adaptive tools, iXL and Lexia, which build a personalized differentiated learning pathway for each student. And last, the professional learning for our staff is an essential piece anchoring our efforts. We have our reading specialists and math specialists providing support to our classroom teachers during collaborative planning. They're in classrooms modeling best practices, co-teaching, side-by-side with our teachers. Additionally, during our Camp GPS summer professional learning sessions, teachers had the opportunity to dive in early to curriculum and other resources and had time to work together and explore and begin planning their instruction. Just last Friday, for example, all elementary teachers received training in how to use that iXL computer adaptive program. Much like our approach to literacy, our aim en masse to ensure every student receives high-quality instruction supported by robust progress monitoring and professional learning. This year, we launched Kid'EM in our elementary schools, which provides our teachers with a comprehensive math curriculum that's aligned to the state standards. It has lots of resources for them to differentiate instruction and support students at all levels. It's particularly valuable for tailoring lessons to meet students' unique needs and then track their progress. In Math Six and Algebra One, we've expanded the use of hands-on manipulatives to help our students better grasp those abstract concepts. These tactile tools deepen understanding by making the math more visual and interactive. Progress monitoring, we have math interventionists supporting our students needing additional help. We're continuing the use of common assessments and formative pulse checks along the way. Improving student outcomes also depends on equipping our teachers with the right skills and professional knowledge, which we continue to do. As we continue our commitment to raising student achievement in science, we've embedded spiral reviews of key concepts throughout the year, and we are emphasizing that students should have several opportunities for hands-on labs and field-based learning experiences, such as our partnership with the James River Association. We'll continue using common assessments to monitor student progress and identify targeted needs. We know that by aligning our resources and strategies and support, we will position our students for stronger achievement. And last, our focus in social studies is to build that strong foundational knowledge, enhance their critical thinking skills, and prepare them to engage thoughtfully as informed citizens. Our social studies curriculum has been revised to align with the new Virginia standards of learning to ensure consistency and rigor across all of the classrooms. Teachers will continue using common assessments, and professional learning opportunities will emphasize those strategies.
We know that when schools and families work together, students benefit through stronger academic achievement and increased confidence. Our goal is to build meaningful partnerships with families by providing opportunities to learn, collaborate, and access resources to help them support their children's education at home. To strengthen these partnerships, we are hosting two family academies to equip parents and caregivers with practical tools to support learning. Our first literacy night will be held on October twenty-second. I hope it'll go on your calendar. It'll happen at the Williamsburg Regional Library, and it'll start at five-thirty PM. Sessions will include guidance on building comprehension, promoting a love of reading, and using grade-appropriate strategies that align with classroom instruction. Additionally, we will host a math night later this school year focused on helping families understand the math curriculum and providing them with hands-on activities and resources they can use at home to reinforce their children's learning. Family academies are more than about information. They provide interactive experiences where families and educators learn side-by-side. We're also committed to keeping our families well-informed. Regular updates will include resources and strategies for supporting learning at home, such as tips for reinforcing foundational skills, guidance on using online learning platforms, and suggestions for creating productive study routines. We recognize that every child's learning journey is unique, and we're committed to supporting families of students with diverse needs. For families of multilingual learners, our Language Instruction Education Program Parent Nights, or LEAP Parent Nights, offer guidance on how to support English language development and navigate school resources effectively. Additionally, our CAC events provide a platform for families with students with disabilities to engage with school leaders and learn about supports. And one additional thing I wanted to mention is that we are sponsoring a reading revolution in our elementary schools. I believe that occurs next week. You have been given an opportunity to come and spend some time reading to our students, and we hope that you may take us up on that offer. It's a community-wide effort. Let me talk a little bit about addressing achievement gaps for students residing in the City of Williamsburg. It is a central priority. It's important to note that the pass rates of students who reside in the city have improved by eight percentage points in the areas of math and six percentage point in the area of science since the city's study was conducted in twenty-twenty-three. And while reading scores have dropped by one percentage point, I think it's important to also remember that students are now being assessed on a more rigorous reading standard. Regardless of the results, our forward-facing approach combines rigorous data analysis, collaborative problem-solving, and targeted resource allocation to ensure all of our students, all WJCC public school students, have equitable opportunities to succeed. We are being more intentional about strengthening how we analyze and monitor key data specific to students living within the city. This includes a deeper dive into student achievement, enrollment trends, behavior, class ratios, teacher quality, including licensure status. By examining these data points collectively, we can identify patterns that influence student outcomes and focus on the factors most closely tied to achievement. In addition to numbers, we will gather qualitative data, such as feedback from teachers and families and students, to better understand the lived experiences behind the data trends. This will allow us to conduct a root cause analysis that goes beyond surface-level symptom identification and work to address underlying barriers that contribute to achievement gaps. To ensure that this work is collaborative and sustainable, we will convene a community of practice that brings together school division leaders, city leaders, city liaisons, and other wraparound support services to meet regularly, analyze and discuss data, and identify cross-functional and systemic recommendations for improvement. And finally, we are committed to examining the need for additional staffing supports for schools that serve a high percentage of students from the city. This may include interventionists or other specialized roles to address targeted needs. This is a unique and complex challenge, but our team, our school division, our teachers and leaders are committed to being transparent and collaborative as we dive deeper into understanding and responding to the needs of our students. Ladies and gentlemen, that concludes the first portion of our presentation this morning. We will pause and take questions.
So I had a quick question, and I'm sorry I had to walk out at the end there, but I was curious because you didn't see, and I know I do appreciate what Chair Ordigo said about all the things that have been going on, but it didn't seem like there'd been a lot of change through the three years, some, you know, it just... So do you think your staff development, is it that teachers are just maybe burnt out a little? Is, are you looking at the way you do your staff development? What do you attribute that to?
My, a couple things, Ms. Larson, thank you for the question, first of all. Secondly, our teachers are working tirelessly to address student needs, day in and day out. I think that some of the changes that Ms. Ordigo pointed out are reflected in our literacy numbers not showing greater improvement year over year yet, but we believe that that's going to, to improve. I think that at the elementary level, bringing on a unified curriculum in both English Language Arts and math will help us move that needle forward. Teachers are tired, administrators are tired, but they're also firmly committed to the work, and I believe that we are providing strong professional learning opportunities, but there is a lot. I think if you consider the fact that we brought on a new literacy curriculum at the elementary level, went through year one of that or just starting year two, and then said, here is a new math curriculum that we would like for you to work with as well, that compounds the challenges that our teachers are facing. So part of that is a need for us to look at additional supports and resources in terms of personnel to support our teachers. Part of that is how we administratively provide feedback to teachers about things that are occurring in the classroom on a, on a regular basis and frequent basis. And then I think the final piece from my perspective is how are we supporting teachers who are facing challenges with some student behavior issues? Because some of those student behavior issues, while mighty, might be related to a student or a couple students detract from the learning opportunities for the rest of the classroom. So there are several challenges within that that I think contribute to our data.
So then I just had, oh, I'm sorry, just one quick follow-up. You mentioned that you had to change the program to vowels?
Valve, went from, went from pals with a P to vowels with a V.
Okay, so when, that was, I guess, an administration change or Department of Ed change?
Yes, ma'am.
And so we're getting ready to get a different administration in November?
Yes, ma'am.
Could they turn around again and change that? And then, so it's twofold, so that definitely, I'm, it would go into some of this. And then, you don't have to give that this piece of the answer today, but moving forward, what kind of financial difference, when you, when you have to go out and do something different, when an administration makes a change like that? I'd like to know, not, you don't have to tell me today, but what kind of financial impact does that have on your budget?
Sure. We'll, we'll get some of that information together for you. It was, as we moved towards Benchmark Advanced and even purchasing the Kid'EM texts to be in alignment at the state level, it is not an inexpensive endeavor. We were able to use, over the course of the last couple of years, year-end funds. We are requesting to build out a textbook reserve so that we can accommodate when there are changes in curriculum. For instance, the state social studies and science curriculum has changed, and frankly, we need to go through a textbook adoption this spring to bring those on at the elementary level, so there, that does occur. With a change in administration, there's possible that there's a change in focus and a change in expectation. We try within our division to keep the main thing the main thing, and that's the students in front of us every day and working with them on how they get from this level to that level. And my hope is that we don't experience whiplash with a new administration, but that there is some level of continuity and expectation.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Just to answer Ms. Larson's question, for education, in the two-year rolling, I'm not, the governor won't be able to appoint some of the next two years for education.
Those, don't get administrators sit for two more years, so you'll, the, the things you'll have to see change are the general assemblies changes, which will be mostly funding, not towards curriculum, so.
If I could just follow up with, on Ms. Larson's point from a slightly different angle, and not at all to be critical of our school system, but what is the cost for, to teachers and students with the need to engage in such elaborate training for new systems, new expectations, and the like? I note that as the school year begins, probably at least half of the weeks that we've had so far have been sort of truncated as a result of the need to deal with addressing some of these concerns. What kind of, what kind of cost, not just, I can, financial cost, but cost in terms of the ability to get off to a fast start and the ability to manage both teaching your classes and learning new systems?
I think you might be referring to the fact that we've had two specific collaboration learning and planning days during the course of the first five or six weeks of school. One of those was K-12, so that happened last Friday, October the third. That has been a day that the division has utilized normally at the end of the month of September, the first week in October, for teachers to get back together again after going through the first four, four and a half weeks of school. Last year, when we brought on the new math curriculum, we felt like it was very important to give elementary teachers an additional day in that window. They were given an opportunity over the course of the summer, whether it be in June or early August, to spend a few days learning that new math curriculum, and we were able to compensate them for that. At the same time, we knew that after the first three weeks, they might need additional opportunities to get back together over the course of the day. So we've had one elementary collaboration learning and planning day at this point, and then a full school division one. There'll be two days in November that are typically reserved for parent conferences around election time, and then there'll be one additional day in December for elementary teachers. That's part of their contractual responsibility for the division. I, I will say that those days are important, but what's also important is during the day planning time for teachers. At the elementary level, that's particularly challenging. It's related to staffing. It's related to the, the idea that there, if there were more centers, classrooms, and centers offerings, electives, more PE option on a daily basis, our elementary core teachers would have more time to collaborate and plan during the day. So there, there are a number of cascading impacts as we continue to encourage our teachers to be thoughtful in their planning.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for this information and the, and the presentation. Absolutely, there's a lot to take in, but very appreciative to be able to do so. I actually had a question about the, you mentioned that the number of high school students taking SOLs is decreasing due to something called being able to do verified credits. And so I just wanted a little bit more about that, and I, I think where my question really goes to is how does that impact the data we see if less high school students are taking SOLs? And do those students who don't take the SOLs and instead go through this verified credit process, do they not show up in the data at all? credit process, do they not show up in the data at all?
So the diploma requirements have changed, so the students sit for all the courses and they earned a regular credit, but students have to earn a certain number of verified credits, so that's what's changed. The state reduced the number of verified credits that they need to earn, so that's lower. So yes, to answer your question, fewer students actually sit for the SOL test. The students that earn the LAVC demonstrating mastery all throughout the year, those students do not sit. So those 91% that passed, they did not sit for the social studies SOL test.
So, and to follow up then, the data that we see with respect to social studies does not, those students who did not sit for the test are completely taken out of that information altogether. So what we see through the social studies data are only those students who took the SOLs. And so that we, but then recognizing that, then there are going to be students that are just not there at all.
A lot of times, that was just for the high school. A lot of times, those students are transfers in that missed an opportunity, or students that weren't successful and had to take the test. It's a very low number of students.
It's a low number, and is that only for social studies? Okay, thank you.
That's why we wanted to show you the 91.2% of the LAVC too for history. A 50%, 52% social studies pass rate doesn't feel good at all.
Yeah.
Which is why we felt like it's important for you to know that, hey, there are 91% of our students that are not taking that SOL test, that are demonstrating proficiency and have earned a credit this way.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
I think we should keep going. Okay. We want to take a look at how WJCC performed in comparison to a few of our local school divisions. There is a desire, I think oftentimes, to look at local comparisons, but we're doing that based simply on geographic proximity, and it's not aligned to our overall demographic. As an example, WJCC has 18% of their students identified as students with disabilities, whereas Hampton is at 14%, Newport News is at 14%, York is at 12%. WJCC has identified 35% students that are economically disadvantaged, whereas Hampton's at 54, Newport News is at 58, and York is at 30. We are going to show you the demographic comparison across the localities, but I don't think it's an apples-to-apples comparison, but we want you to at least know what it looks like. Yes, ma'am. Send you those percentages?
Yes.
Be happy to.
That, that's helpful.
Yes, ma'am.
This slide shows reading performance in WJCC compared to three local school divisions. WJCC is represented in the green bar on the left. The overall raw pass rate for reading is 78%, ahead of two out of the three local school division comparisons. The next slide shows raw math pass rates compared to the local school divisions. Again, WJCC is represented in the green bar on the left with a math pass rate of 77%, ahead of two of the three local school division comparisons. And the next slide shows the science pass rates with WJCC at 77%, ahead of one of our three local school divisions. And next, the comprehensive instructional program, which I will refer to as CIP, is a consulting company working with the consortium of 75 public school divisions in Virginia to improve student achievement. According to its website, CIP helps teachers and leaders by providing learning activities and assessments aligned to Virginia's curriculum. The data provided on this slide was calculated by CIP using publicly available data, data from the Build a Table tool from the VDOE. As we look at ranking, this slide shows the ranking of WJCC schools with our local school, school divisions based on an overall pass rate, meaning the total number of passed students over the total number of tests taken. For 2025, WJCC schools is ranking 27th out of 131 Virginia school divisions and higher than two of the three local divisions shown. This chart also shows an overall rank gain by three points for WJCC comparing 24 to 2025 data.
A more, I think, appropriate comparison for us to share with you is for data for school divisions that are more similar to WJCC, whether that be in the number of schools, enrollment, per pupil spending, economically disadvantaged percentages, English language learner percentages, or overall operating budget. So there are six school divisions across the Commonwealth that we typically look at in terms of their demographic, and we consider them to be similar divisions. Augusta, Bedford, Bakir, Frederick, Rockingham, and Suffolk.
You will see WJCC data on the far left in green, followed by the six similar school divisions in alpha order on the next few slides. This slide shows the all-students pass proficiency rate in English reading, with WJCC outperforming five of the six similar school divisions. The 78 represents a 78% combined pass rate of all students who took a reading SOL test in grades three through eight, and end of course reading in high school. This slide shows that WJCC outperformed all six similar school divisions in mathematics, with 77% of the tested students passing the math SOL test with proficiency. Here we see that WJCC outperformed five of the similar school divisions in science, with 77% of students testing, remember that's grades five, eight, and end of course in high school, demonstrating pass proficiency on the science SOL assessment. This slide provides data about the ranking of WJCC schools with our similar school divisions based on that overall pass rate, the total number of passed tests over the total number of tests taken. Data from 2024 and 2025 are provided so that you can see the difference, and WJCC is ranked higher than all six similar school divisions at 27th out of 131 school divisions across the state.
As we transition to chronic absenteeism, I just wanted to reiterate that I understand that members of our community want to compare our school division with others, and I understand that. We want to get better ourselves every day for our students, and I think it's important that when we're comparing ourselves, that we can try to compare ourselves to those that we are most likely to resemble. Kathy?
The next few slides are going to take a look at chronic absenteeism for WJCC schools. The first graph shows data across three school years measuring the chronic absenteeism rate for WJCC. Chronically absent means a student misses 10% or more of the days enrolled in school. This includes excused and unexcused absences. So if a student is enrolled for 180 days and misses 18 days of school, then the student is chronically absent. The green bar represents WJCC chronic absenteeism rates, and the blue bar represents the state rate. As you can see, WJCC chronic absenteeism rates have steadily dropped over three years, with last year coming in at 9.9%, or 1,117 students being chronically absent. Additionally, the WJCC rate continues to be better than the state average chronic absenteeism rate. The number inside each green bar indicates the number of students chronically absent that school year. Schools work diligently with families to keep students engaged and attending schools. For example, if our schools reach five or more unexcused absences, the school develops an attendance plan. Our schools developed 1,690 student attendance plans to support improved attendance last year. In addition to the developed attendance plans, 410 parent conferences were held for students with 10 or more unexcused absences. This slide breaks down the same data by city and county. 140 students or 13% out of 1,082 Williamsburg students were chronically absent last year. 974 county students, or 9.6%, were chronically absent out of 10,151. The next slide shows the 24-25 chronic absenteeism rate of WJCC in comparison to three local school divisions. The WJCC rate of 9.9% of students chronically absent ranks second out of the four divisions and is lower than the state rate of 14.8%, denoted by the red line. This slide shows the 24-25 chronic absenteeism rate of WJCC in comparison to our six similar school divisions. The WJCC rate of 9.9% of students chronically absent ranks best out of the similar divisions and is lower than the state rate of 14.8%.
We have much to celebrate as a school division. We have much work to do as a school division. We'd like to share with you a brief video that we provided for staff during our back-to-school kickoff in August, and I think Sean's going to hit play now. This presentation isn't just a report card, it's a reflection of our collective effort to ensure every student is seen, supported, and successful. Our progress reflects what's happening inside our schools, relationships, engagement, and a renewed sense of belonging that you can't measure with a single score. We know there's still work ahead, but we also know what's possible when we stay focused, use data strategically, and support one another as a team. The path to becoming Virginia's premier school division isn't about perfection, it's about persistence, partnership, and progress. We are grateful for your partnership and look forward to answering any additional questions.
I have a couple. First, I'd like to say congratulations to everyone today on the contract. It was a lot of hard work, a lot of effort that went into it from all these bodies, and I think it was, at the end, it's in the best interest of the citizens and our staff as I went to the event the other night, that the, for the Board of Supervisors and the School Board Health Library, and Madam Chair, you did an excellent job on putting the word out about what the schools are doing, where they're going, where they're heading, and there was a lot talked about in there as far as why y'all are not doing certain things. And I think you did very well as far as showing that, you know, it takes a while to turn this ship around, takes a while to put things in place, it takes, you know, continuity with, with not only staff, but with leadership and all that, and the job you've done with your board is, in my eyes, been, been excellent. So thank you for your leadership on that. There's a lot talked about the students and why the students aren't getting this and aren't getting that. And of course, it's easy to sit there when you're not sitting in your seats, it's easy to sit there and criticize and say what you're not doing, not what you are doing, you know, and I think that's a thing that we need to get out even more, is, is what the board's doing not only out front, but behind the scenes, and what y'all are trying to do and trying to achieve, we as students. It's like our board, we talk about it, we know what we're doing, we know what we're trying to do, but a lot of times, we don't put it out there and tell the people, this is what we're doing, this is the direction we're going. We try to, but some people don't listen, period, so you can't change ignorance, so... Let's see, what else I have on here? Yeah, that's about covers, I'd like to just thank all you for your leadership and everything you do. And you know, we've had times where we've questioned things and talked about that. I think where we're at now is a great starting point for the new James City County School Board, James City County, the city, and all of us working together. I'm hoping this shows that, you know, the citizens out there, that these three bodies are working together to make sure that not only we're getting the answers answered for the citizens, but we're educating our students and teaching them and showing them what grown adults can do when they come together and put something together, and how well they can move things forward for our children, because it's about our children. I'd like to thank you all for your leadership, I'd like to thank the Board of Supervisors, I'd like to thank your staff, superintendent, and all the work y'all have done and continue to do. And I'd like to also thank the teachers, because without the teachers and the efforts they're putting in, and there's teachers that work hours that never account for anything. They're there, you see them, if you go to the schools and watch, you see them getting out late. Some of them you see that sneak out a little early, but most of them are getting in there late, they're getting in there early, you know, and we've got it everywhere, I mean, that's just nature, human beings. But we've got a lot of dedication with, with having students in the school system now for 40 years, or, no, 35 years, excuse me, 35 years, and 35 years in James City County schools, and I can tell you, we have run into a bunch of great teachers that care, that still see us at restaurants and outside and all that, and, hey, how such and such doing, what are they doing now, what's going on there? So, you know, you could pick the school system apart and, and try to find the little cracks and all that, and it'll always be, you'll never get everything filled. But I think y'all do an outstanding job for the community and for the students and for the teachers. Can we do better? Yeah, we can always do better. I mean, everybody can do better. And we try, so I just want to, you know, let the people that are watching, probably six or seven of them, that are watching today, but I'd like to let them know, they can spread it around on what a great job you do, and what a great job this entire team has done, not only for James City County, but for Williamsburg, but for the community as a whole, and making sure we take care of our students. So I just want to say thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Temple, you know, Dr. Keefer, thank you for the presentation. You know, one of the things that you said is that you're not satisfied, but you went beyond that, and I think you've, in that, you've identified ways to make improvements, and, and I really do appreciate that. I think seeing the data as you presented it was, was something that the city wanted to see more frequently, to understand better how students are doing, not just in aggregate, but by the jurisdictions, by the different breakout groups, because that helps us identify where there are problems. I think we, you know, a lot in the community, a lot of us in the community have recognized that there have been achievement issues at certain, in certain categories of students, and we see it now. But I think what we also see is a renewed, bigger, from the division to make improvements, and that's very rewarding. And with that, I know... And, and with that, I know that you all will be successful. So I want to take a moment just to, to thank you all for the work that you do, and I want to thank the county for working with the city to get us to this day of signing this new contract. It's a modernized contract, and I have great faith in the men and women that work in our division to make sure that the, the most precious things that we have, our children, will have a way forward in life to be successful. So thank you.
If I can, I, I will be very brief in, in adding on. I'm very happy we've, we've gotten to this point. We've gotten everything that, I really appreciate the, the presentation because it lays out in excruciating detail all the deep, all the problems and a, a way you're going to try to tackle that moving forward. And I think with us as your partners on this, we, I think you can, we can do that. I would tell you, based upon a lot of my experiences dealing with the military, that I always referred to one thing, there's always too, always too much headquarters and not enough hindquarters. And I think that we need to make sure that we focus, number one, on the children, but also on the teachers, because the people who are in that classroom with those teachers are those young students that are trying to learn, and those teachers bear an awesome responsibility to our community. And we bear an awesome responsibility to make sure that they are properly supported. So I would, I would, I would like us to maybe keep in mind that a lot of these plans and everything have to translate to how we make their job easier to do in the classroom. Thank you.
I just want to make just a quick comment, and then I'm going to get sort of sentimental at the end. I do, I appreciate all the staff development. I mean, I know how hard y'all are working, and I also appreciate the deep dive into data because I think it's very important, and, and that's why I said, you know, I think, because we are constantly compared to York, and there are so many different, they get a lot different money than we do as well. And, and people don't want to look at that. They want to take a very surface look and then judge. And so I think the more data that you push out about certain things, the, the better. Should we try to be where they are? Sure we should. And, and it sounds as though you're getting there, and I think taking deep dives into data and really looking at things, I think, will help get you there. You have an excellent team. I appreciate that you didn't come in and get, say, oh, I'm going to make a clean sweep, because there are people on your leadership team that are trusted. I mean, Ms. Worley, she's been a principal here, you know, she has, she's walked the walk, and so I'm, so I thank you for keeping your leadership team somewhat intact, understanding that there may, you know, that there always could be changes, but I just appreciate things like that. I do worry about teachers. I worry about overstaffed development, burning them out. They come in, you work out with them at five o'clock in the morning. They exercise at five o'clock in the morning.
I used to. I'm not making it to 5:00 AM these days.
Well, I saw you, I saw you walking in Newtown at seven fifteen the other night. So you're exercising late as well.
Need to wear a hat and a hoodie.
Yeah, well, you're still, you're still recognizable. But meaning that they're, they're getting up then at four o'clock in the morning so that they can get time to take care of themselves. And so I worry about, you know, this, there's all this pressure, 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 and, and then staff development and, you know, I want to make sure they're breathing. And I, you know, I know Mayor Pons and during a lot of these talks that we were having, you know, he kept talking about how can we make sure that we're supporting our teachers and supporting, so I, I want people to know that that was, that was a lot of the discussion that was going on during the contract. It wasn't just all dotting eyes and who's paying what, and there was a lot of personal concern. And, but you are developing good humans, and so I'm going to take a moment and tell you that last night, my whole, all three of my kids came to the WJCC Educational Foundation. One of them lives here. The other two had to travel here. And they, all three raised their paddles. And that says a lot to Craig and I, that they got a fantastic education. They went K-12 to WJCC schools, and they appreciated their experience, their teachers, their aides, their bus drivers, their every, you know, they, for them to, because they're, they're young adults, they've got a lot of other things that they're spending money on, but it was important to them to give back. So at the end of the day, no matter what the data says, you're producing good humans, and there's a lot to be said, and you can't put a price tag on that. So I appreciate all that you've done. I appreciate all the data, and I look forward to this continuing in the future, because I think that's the only way we can truly make change. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Keeler, just wanted to say thank you for the presentation. And, and most of all, commend you and your staff, the school board, the teachers, everyone for all of the successes that identified in this presentation. And more importantly, that you're, you're not satisfied and that you've identified challenges and developed strategies to identify those challenges, because we all have high expectations. But I don't want our high expectations to overshadow the successes that we've seen already. And I know I have grandkids in the school system, and as Ms. Larson just alluded to, you know, I see them developing every single day, and that's from the classroom instruction to everything, every encounter that they have during the day. And I think hopefully what the decision that was made earlier today is one less distraction for everyone in the system, so that we can focus on, what they can really focus on, and that's our students. So I just wanted to say thank you. I know putting all this data together is time-consuming with, with everything else that you do, but I really appreciate all the work that was put into it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to first say, gee, it's nice to have a kumbaya moment here. And if nothing else, I think that this long exercise has allowed us to develop a, a better way of relating to each other. I think one of the great aspects of this is that we have included the school board in, in this contract, and I think that also sends us another message. This was rich in data, important information about the characters, characteristics of our school system, our students, understanding of what our teachers are, are having to address. And it allows us to think in terms of the city and county, not just in terms of the schools, but what, what else we may need to be addressing in order to help our students thrive, to, to take some of the burden off of families. I really think that's a great idea to have the family night process, but we also have to recognize that there are a lot of families where it's hard to find the time, the free time for a, a parent to engage in this kind of system. So, again, I'll, I'll join with everybody else in saying this is wonderful to have reached this conclusion, and we should recognize it as a great success, but also a challenge to us, all three of our entities, and a, a real good opportunity to step off into an elevation of
Thank you for use of that word.
Of all of our community. Thank you.
I would just like to thank everybody for what, all the work they've done. I know it's a lot of work. I wasn't involved in it, but, but I certainly appreciate it. I really like all the data, because I'm a kind of a numbers person. I do like that. It's nice to know. But we're all in this together, and I just see us getting better and better every day, and that's what we have to strive for. So thank you. Thank you all.
All right. Well, thank you all for, for coming today. Thank you for all the, the kind remarks, and thank you, I do want to acknowledge, as, as Mr. McGlinnan said, the kumbaya moment, it does, it does feel good to work together and feel like we really accomplished something. I think that it's, I said before, it's, it's a win for all of our bodies, for the governing bodies, but it's also mostly a win for our students, because they're the reason that we're, we're all here today. They're the reason that we do all of this work. We really want to create the brightest future possible for every single child in Williamsburg, James City County, and I look forward to working towards that goal. So with that, we will adjourn. Yeah, this meeting of the school board is adjourned. We don't call a roll for that.
Tuesday, the fourteenth at five.
At seven, at five o'clock.
Five o'clock, yeah.
Stevens, color roll.
Mr. Himple?
Aye.
Ms. Snoll?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Ms. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Mr. Isbell?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. May I have a motion to adjourn the Williamsburg City Council?
So I move that City Council Williamsburg be adjourned.
Second.
Ms. McKay?
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Ms. Kernscheer?
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Dent?
Aye.
Mayor Pons?
Aye.
Return. Thank you, everyone.